Do you suck the damn so off?
Oh.
Where was dinner?
Well, we went to Capri's, so we didn't overdo it, but we can still have chicken and fries. Capri's.
That's funny.
That's good stuff.
Hey, brother, I owe you a phone call.
What's up, dude?
Uh, I owe you a phone call.
Call me anytime.
Good deal.
Well, I'll say that. Call me anytime in the next ninety-six, in the next seventy-two hours.
I got it.
Yeah, yeah. I'd be preferable.
Thank you.
They share.
Is this my fam- my fam mail?
That's your thing. I love you so.
Full light this time.
No? You know, if I'd wear it like that.
Okay.
It has that, it has that written on it.
Return the sender?
No, I almost thought I had to leave your house.
Never, yeah, never, never. It's saying, do it. But it is, but it's in the mall. Okay. Got there, man.
Thank you.
Little charger?
Yeah, charger.
Go give her gas.
Yeah, man. I like Amazon.
It's been nice. It's been a bad break. It's been honest.
Looking pretty awesome, yeah. I made sure, Lord, for your social media posts, we got a milestone.
What is your milestone?
It may not be the same as yours. It's all relative, right? Yeah, the spouse who's looking forward to our five seventy away.
Yeah. Thirty would lie on a cookie. It's stupid. It's not true.
Yeah. All that, they got little help with you. I hear them, I said, look, look. Right.
Yes. Island. Couple of lights, island. Cause they're a lot.
They took us from ten years ago.
One good thing about.
Breakfast of your life, that's all that.
Breakfast of your life. That was a place.
He's trying to go to the restaurant.
Not kidding.
That's great. That's great. Those incomparables at the rear pass. No, yeah.
Fox every time and entertaining.
Probably two, three times. We got a smart. I'll tell you my halftime.
Well, I feel, I feel like my best most team. So how empty stadium was that their quarters? I'm like, oh, God, hey, you're right.
Yeah. Time to, like, oh, come down. Everybody I ran into. Our work is done in concert, now it's time to get ready.
Yeah. Quite.
So, no objection, we'll begin with our agenda. Madam, Madam manager, we got a couple people here.
Yes, sir, we do. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. We have two items tonight on your regular work session agenda before we move into executive session. And our first item is an update from Beth Paul on our Greenville Arena District and our Bonsecores Wellness Arena. So, that, the floor is yours.
Thank you all for having me. It's been about a year since I came to the last workshop. I just wanted to come share a few updates from the arena on our fiscal year that closed June thirty and talk about a little bit about what's ahead. So, you can, here we go. Just wanted to share a few accolades that we got this year. Some are very, based on, based on numbers, purely tickets sold. This year, we were the top, number thirteen top selling arena in the United States, twenty-five worldwide. And so we listed some major cities that we surpassed. So we had a really tremendous this year in terms of ticket sales. And I think this is a really strong indicator of the type of talent that we're able to attract, plus the strength of the economy here in Greenville. So really excited about those, those, that statistic. And the second one, probably a little more subjective, we were just recently nominated for as Arena of the Year by AIBA, which stands for International Entertainment Buyers Association. The other nominees, nominees in this category are Vegas, Brooklyn, Kansas City, and Austin. And this is a nomination, we've never received it before. Last year Madison Square Garden won, and this is really a little bit more subjective. They take our business, some of the business, plus things like feedback from promoters, artists, agents, peer buildings, et cetera. And so we were nominated by a peer group for this award. We'll find out on October the second, or October the eighth, if we actually win. But nonetheless, we're excited to be nominated, so, yeah.
What accounts for the second, the outperforming Atlanta, Charlotte? I mean, is that, do they have multiple arenas? I mean, or is that, is that a peer to peer?
It's peer to peer, number of tickets sold, for sure, for the first, well, that, those are mid-year reports. So for us, that would have been January to June of two thousand twenty-four. We were outpacing ticket sales for those. We just listed a sample of markets that were also listed fourteen or higher.
But is that number of tickets sold or revenue from tickets sold?
This is, this is number of tickets sold. There was another statistic that was related to dollar amounts that we were in the top fifty. I just didn't list that here, but it was also a really strong number.
That dream about just a few events, or?
Brian Bachel, is it, what's his name?
Sure. Jared or did you?
And Bon Jovi, and Bon Jovi.
Zach Bryan.
Zach Bryan, whatever, yeah.
Yes.
Bon Jovi got us over the, over the hump of, yes.
And it wouldn't include any comparisons that, for tenants, for like an NBA team, NHL, etc. So this is purely live entertainment, music. I think drivers of that certainly were Zach Bryan, that was a big one, Andre Bachelly, Stevie Nicks, Journey. I think we had about eight sellout concerts in that timeframe.
That's great.
Yep.
All your favorites.
Really strong numbers. So by the numbers, we have some early results on an annual economic impact study. We'll release the full study when we're able to dive into it a little bit more. But gross impact from fiscal twenty-four was approximately a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars. Our attendance is six hundred and seventy-three thousand. We did a hundred and thirty-nine events, and so those are commercial ticketed events, plus another one hundred and community slash nonprofit, nonprofit events. And we were open and working either a changeover or load-in or an actual show two hundred and seventy days a year, of the year. So it's a pretty high utilization rate. Five hundred and ten full-time equivalent jobs in fiscal twenty-four. And then directly on the GAD payroll, it's about four hundred employees. This is pretty consistent. Two thousand twenty-four was probably a little bit higher than some other years, but we're not, we're not far off what our average has been. The next report on those statistics will be related to sort of net new, net new spending in the city of Greenville compared to maybe the county and then statewide. So we're excited to share those in the future. We worked with our partners at VGSC just to share a few samples of the impact on the city hotels when we have an event. So we took a sample, and what you can see is hotel occupancy is pretty high. The lowest was probably Jelly Roll at ninety percent, which is the lowest occupancy we would see on a major concert. The arrow on the side is comparing the same day in the previous year. So for instance, let's take Andre Bachelly, the third one down. Hotel occupancy on the, on February fifteen was at ninety-five percent, which was three percent higher than the prior year. So not a significant increase in occupancy, but the ADR was two sixty-five, which is forty, forty-two percent higher than the prior year. I think if you go to the next slide, we'll take a look at Stevie Nicks. City hotels were close to a hundred percent occupancy, which was twenty percent higher. So you could probably say that that was, that was, the arena event was a driver of that, and the average daily rate was two forty-three. Zach Bryan, I think the difference here, I put the day in a week, Sunday and a Monday. So I think those are going to be typically a lower hotel occupancy day. So when they bring a show in on a Sunday or Monday, you're really going to see those percentages increase. So Zach Bryan was ninety-eight percent on both of the days, which was almost a, well, which was fifty percent, fifty-seven percent increase. So I think that these numbers are important to look at as we start, well, just anytime we bring in a show, we like to see those numbers tick up for our hotel partners. Again, those were, that was specific to, to city hotels. The other way to measure community impact is some of the work we do with our local community partners. I just listed out a few, a few of the events that we're really proud of and that are fun and that have become annual events. You have State Fatherhood Coalition graduates its classes at the arena every year. The Heroes Hike this year with Upstate Warriors had approximately five, I think it was about five hundred hikers, which was really incredible. A few others to highlight, I would say we did increase this year. I'm sure everybody noticed the traffic, but I think the restaurants and downtown retail was missing too. We had, we went from eight to fourteen graduations. And I, next year we will do fifteen when you add in Fountain Inn, and it, it doesn't seem that graduations will go back to Timmons Arena. So they'll all remain at the arena. Well Walkers continues to be incredibly popular. We did four thousand walkers last year. Again, that's a program where this, the arena is open Tuesdays and Thursdays for walkers, and it's really great. It's a really great initiative. We donated twenty-five hundred tickets last year, and seventeen hundred of those were to Title One schools to make sure that they could get to the SEC tournament. And four hundred tickets to various foster family programs in Greenville. I'll jump down to the bottom where it says our partners. The arena district, of course, has really strong initiatives, but so do our partners. And at the arena, the Small Brabbits, which is our prime tenant, Levy is our food and beverage provider. All of the workers in the concession stands are volunteers, and last year, over seven hundred thousand dollars went directly back to those nonprofits. Significant number. I mean, they worked, you know, but they do get ten percent of sales. And then the Small Brabbits ended up donating over two hundred thousand dollars to local nonprofits and had some new initiatives with Greenville County Schools, Stop Out Bullying, South Carolinian Readiness, and careers at sports. So it's a lot happening over at the arena just outside of the, a lot of events that we have. We'll talk about some, just some high level, some, bless me, financial stewardship that we pay attention to. We do each year, we have had since, you know, probably two thousand and ten. You know, our revenues have exceeded our budget, so we like to give, not take. So there's, we've had, we've had some really good success there. Our capital investment this year, and that excess goes directly into supporting a capital improvement plan. This year we executed six million dollars in capital improvements, largely due to the new roof, which we just finished, which is exciting. A sweep renovation.
And expensive.
And expensive. And I think it was harder to get the original roof off and to get the new one on, but, and then our major HVAC systems. And then going into fiscal twenty-five, we do have a capital plan of nine point eight million. One of the larger expenditures there is new seats. We've just recently issued an RFP to get new seats. The seats we have are, we don't have any replacement parts, so we are, they have exceeded their useful life. They are original to the building. And then reserves and debt administration. If we look at just at the end of fiscal year, we have just shy of fifteen million dollars in outstanding debt. That was, some of that's original debt, some of it has been refinanced, refunded, and a little bit of new money. And I just always like to, I, I think that I'm really comfortable with where we are in terms of outstanding debt at the end of the fiscal year.
Does that reflect any of our bonded, any of our accommodations tax?
Correct, yes. Two of those series, you want to?
Can you go back to that?
Go back one more. The GO bond is the first one. The GO bond has, that's ours. The next two are funded from two point three percent of accommodations tax. So a total of about five point nine million.
County.
City and county.
City and, it's city and county.
City and county.
Percentage?
Fifty percent.
Split, we split with them? Okay.
Correct.
I thought those were expiring soon, but I see it says twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
It's something that recently expired, like in the last couple of years.
We had a GO did.
City had some hos- I think it was hospitality, no, wouldn't be hospitality, be accommodations tax.
It'd be accommodations. We haven't anything mature recently.
Nothing, uh, expired.
Nope. That's right. So with that, that debt payment is split fifty-fifty with county. So, do you have any other question? So looking ahead, before. Before we get to the, the master planning, one, one thing I wanted to note, our event ca- about the event calendar, it's looking really strong for fiscal twenty-five. The one, the one thing that'll be exciting and different is Furman University will play their full basketball season at the arena this year. So they'll start on October twenty-seven, and I think we have eighteen home games, so that'll be great.
Cool.
Yep. Conference games will be played on Wednesdays, and then on Saturdays, we'll have double headers with the hockey team. So we'll play basketball at noon and then hockey at seven. Somebody who wants to join our changeover crew, we're taking applications. So, so we are, we endeavored on a master planning process. We issued an RFP in the spring, and it was a very competitive process. We got proposals back from organizations all over the country and world, actually. But we did select a design team, which is led locally by LS3P, and then LMN and Gensler, which is an industry leader, are also a part of our design team. Our final deliverables and reports are expected in the first quarter of the calendar, quarter three for us, all of us in the room, of fiscal twenty-five. And we do seem to be on schedule with those, with those timelines and those milestones.
Which, which Gensler office are you using, Atlanta?
Yes. And so while we're not quite ready to share any concepts, we've spent a lot of time talking about vision and the principles that are going to drive the master plan. We want it to be, you know, we want to continue to be world-class. We want to elevate the arena and the site. We want a real unique and a unique sense of place for the whole district or for the whole campus, not just the arena itself. We've really spent a lot of time talking about connectivity to, to downtown, and also a connection to, more of a emotional connection to the whole county and the whole state, really. We want to continue to celebrate, celebrate the historical significance of the site and of not just the auditorium, but what was before the auditoriums. We're really excited about some of those conversations that are happening. We want to maintain a strong competitive advantage. We'll take a look at this in a minute. The southeast is a really competitive landscape, and so we want to talk about, we want to make sure that we're prepared for the, for the success long-term. And then the GAD pretty operates by four objectives, financial health, the impact on our community, the organizational culture and guest experience. And so we'll tie some of those design principles and vision back to what's been important for the arena district and its success for several years now. This is what, when, when we talk about competitiveness, this is sometimes, you know, we're not going to compete directly with all of these buildings, but again, the southeast, and when you look at the population, is full of arenas. The dots represent arenas that have more than ten thousand seats. And so we're the star. If you look at new builds, there's four up there. So these are new builds that we didn't have to compete with two or three years ago, especially for things like collegiate basketball tournaments or large, community-wide events. That, those dots represent Fort Worth, Austin, Savannah, and what will be Augusta. And then actually, in two months, Athens is open an eighty-five hundred seat arena. We won't compete probably too much for live music, but there will be things where, because it's Athens, much like Asheville, they'll want to go. Artists will want to go. North Carolina is very busy in, in the arenas that we compete with for business. The states that are shaded in light blue, we just made a distinction between any state that has an SEC institution in it. The orange dots are buildings that are recently renovated or undergoing renovations, and then others are, were more similar to, to the arena. If you look at the next one, as we talk about, you know, the future of the arena, of course, we keep other buildings in mind and what's happening around us. The Spectrum Center in Charlotte is, is underway right now with a major renovation, two hundred and seventy-five million dollar renovation, as is the PNC Arena in Raleigh. This is important because it's, you know, they're setting, they're, they're NHL, NBA buildings, but they are setting a standard for what arenas should be. And they're the same vintage as the arena. They were built, they were all constructed in the late, mid to late nineties. So same vintage, so some really good parallels there. James Brown Arena will be in construction soon. That one, that one will be brand new, funded by a penny tax. Savannah is brand new, did not compete with Savannah prior. Sometimes it works to our advantage for a show that's going to route well through the southeast. And, but, because it's a totally different market, but it is, again, something we keep in mind. For instance, SEC just announced that they'll host a tournament there, so that's exciting. State Farm Arena did a renovation a few years ago, actually reduced their size. Now they're the same, have the same seating capacity as we do. Legacy Arena is really interesting, and it's a little bit more mature than, than the Bonsecores Arena being built in seventy-six. But the transformation of the arena and what has led to more programming is really unbelievable. They're going to host NCAA in, in March of twenty-five, which would have never happened pre-renovation, ever. Or maybe it would have in the seventies or eighties, but not as the building matured. So I think it's a great illustration of, of opportunities that can arise from modern stations. Thompson Bowling Arena, right down the road in Knoxville, a little bit different, eighty-five billion dollar renovation plan for Thompson Bowling. And so I just wanted to share some of that. Those are things that we are thinking about when we look at the master plan and how the arena can continue to be, you know, successful for us. But our goal is to create great impacts on the, on the city and the county and the state. That really is what drives our decision-making and when we book and how we book, and the things that we offer the citizens of, of Greenville. The partnership we have with the city is really unbelievable. All of you, you have the best departments, people. There, these are in no certain order. There's different times of year, but I did want to just make sure that I touched on all of them quickly. Of course, GPD and the fire department, they're at every single one of our events. And, you know, there's, they go above and beyond. Recently, we had a tabletop exercise about, you know, violence in the workplace and evacuations and some of these things that are happening in society, and they came out in full force to help us plan and make sure that we're as ready as we can be should that happen. David Public Works, Mary Douglas is, actually helped us with the RFP for the master planning process. Bill Foster attends all of our board meetings and represents parking, building and permits. Buddy Skinner is amazing. Office of Management Budget, Parks and Rec. Camilla keeps us all in shape every month. Beth and her team do a fabulous job of helping us tell stories. The city attorney, and of course, the leadership of Shannon and her team is amazing. And I promise, I promised Clint, I wrote it on the page, city engineering. Because I forgot to put it up there. And I, I, I really do think these relationships are unique and are a large part of why we are, why we are successful and how we can be very solution-based and collaborative is, it's really something that's a great joy of my job and my team. You know, and I think the best is still ahead. I think we have some really exciting announcements this week. So, stay tuned. We're a little.
Oh, come on.
Quite aligned. You know, we, we're really approach, I think what we need for the future is continued great vision, not just of the arena, but of this city and of the county. I have a great passion for what we do, have a great passion for how it impacts the community, just like this city has such a great passion for, for what we do. Investment, things like time, resources, money, et cetera, to make sure the arena is well positioned for the future. And partnership, I, I believe that's probably the, one of the key factors that distinguishes us as a, as a community, is the partnerships that we're able to bring together to make success happen. So that's it. I, I think, yes.
You showed us that slide of your, the new, the new competing entities and such. How many of those kind of meet your definition of an emerging mixed-use environment around me, around me?
We don't mind going back. I know Atlanta, what they're doing, State Farm, what they're doing about, down by, you know, State Farm and the football stadium.
That's fine.
Mercedes-Benz. Oh, it's a little.
Because I mean, that's the four issues. We got to, you know, your terms of your vision, what you want to do.
Yeah.
Down with that one, yeah. How many of those have a hotel or restaurant kind of?
Not up here is Duluth. They have Gas South District between here and the downtown arena. They have the Conference Center. They just opened a brand-new Weston and the Arena. And they have a twenty-five hundred person performing arts center, all on one campus, and it's tremendous. From a hotel perspective, you know, Duluth is probably pretty challenged in hotels. But so that's a really great example, not on this page. State Farm is creating a district field. They have the Home Depot Field, which is beside Mercedes-Benz with Centennial Park. They're really doing a lot of things to bring the Atlanta Entertainment District together. Thompson, PNC, they just revealed renderings this week, which is now going to be the Winovo Arena. They are creating a retail, F and B, live entertainment district between the arena and the football stadium. It's a college campus. It's slightly different, but I think it's a really great example. Not on this page would be Tampa, which was on the, the map. Tampa is creating that real district feel, that, which is a great example. Not in the southeast, but a perfect example is what they've done in Milwaukee at Pfizer Forum. They created Deer, Deer Park, I think is what it's called. It's a, it's a spectacular place to be. But it really creates a sense of, a, a sense of place, a neighborhood feel. And, you know, I think ultimately that's what we want. It's something really unique to Greenville. We've taken a lot of, you know, looks at the city plans that are already in existence. We want to make sure we're consistent with what's already there. The great work that you're doing for the Cultural Corridor, I think it puts us in a really, really right place to do a lot of good things.
You get to report county council, I guess, you hired the Gensler group, and that's, that's world-class. It's been playing. They continuing to do their work, so that goes on.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're a big part of.
You need to do if, if county council, so.
Yeah. I think we need to provide some additional information and answer some questions that they had.
Okay.
Councilmember Dowell, and then councilmember Dworkin. Beth, so great. I did, a couple of comments. One, kudos to GPD, especially at church and college, where I tend to cross when I'm heading there. I, I think one of the things our GPD does really well is make the community as they cross feel like it's personal, and they're watching out for their safety. And I know tourists really appreciate that. Those are very dangerous intersections, and our police force does a great job taking care of people and talking to them and not being scary. You know, they, they really do a great job with that, so thanks for mentioning them.
I'm sorry, I'm okay. They do that on the inside, too.
Do they?
Yes.
I, I don't doubt, I just.
It's not scary on the inside, but it's.
I, I just mean they are not aloof. They're doing more than just watching cars and people. They are engaging with people as they cross, and it means a lot to our, to our.
They use a lot of common sense about.
Yeah. So, is it anybody that owns the food and bev?
Levy.
Levy, sorry. What percent of revenues does concessions? Is that something you could share? Is it a, I would hazard a guess it's a big part of the revenue concession.
Significant part. We do focus a lot. I don't have the number right off the top of my head.
Well, let me, let me, let me lead further to what I'm getting at. I would hazard, it's a big portion of the revenues at the arena. It is at the zoo, probably is at the ball field. It is everywhere. Where food and bev's being sold, along with the tickets, you know, guest experience. I, if there's anything that they could do to improve the passage of the lines, because they really have gotten way too slow, in my view, and every moment. And, and so it's lost revenue. People are choosing not to stand in that line. I did see an article last night on the news about facial recognition technology. Did you see it being used in Atlanta?
They're doing it intuit. They're doing a lot of.
And they're doing a lot, but I don't know how to do it, but as we look towards improvements in the well, one of those has to address the lines for the guest experience there, because it's, 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 it is amped up and gotten way too long, and I think people are making a deliberate choice just not to, not to go there. So anything we can do to be helpful on that?
Great, thank you.
Last question is, we did restriping on Alfred and part of that was to make sure you guys were okay in your staging van.
It's great.
How's it going? Everything okay?
Yeah, thank you for that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, good.
Yep, very excited about that.
Councilmember Dworkin, and then I think we're going to have to wrap up with questions because we need to move on to our next item.
So real, real quick, number one, thanks for all the work that you do. I know everyone's been around before you came and we had some languishing years. So thank you for your leadership. One is a, a major thing, one is a minor, and that is, have you done? I'm sure you have and I'm sure I've missed it. Have you done an economic impact on the arena?
We did one in 2011, 2016, and we're just finishing up one for 2024.
Well, I just think it's so important to show not only the city, but the county residents and the state and how important that is. So I'm glad you're doing that. And here's my minor one, and it's kind of dovetailing on what Council Dowell was talking about. And that is, you'd be surprised how many people walk to the arena from the neighborhoods.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, so many people. So I would encourage us and you and this guy right here, Clint, to talk about connectivity. Because there are some parts of the northern part of the city, it's tough getting across academies. So something that we could potentially work on, on.
Tunnel.
On, yeah, we're going to build a tunnel. On, on connecting walkers. And we do a great job on stone.
You need a trolley.
We do a great job.
You need a trolley. Get them.
It might be so many people.
It'll save 45 car parks.
Well, I'd like to see some, some connect. This is not for, this is for all of us, connectivity for a lot of the walkers.
No doubt.
Yep.
High on the, high on the list.
Cemetery in the back.
Yeah, north, north bank.
Yes, we do.
North main, a trolley.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Beth.
Yeah.
All right, our next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is an update on homelessness task force that we have been working on. We just created. So if Megan Barck will come join us at the table, I think all of you all know Megan, who is our president and CEO of United Way. And we have several members of the group that are here this afternoon who can help us any questions or discussions. So, hi Megan.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Great to see you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the growing opportunity that we have in Greenville. So I don't think it's any surprise to any of you in this room that there's increased awareness and visibility of people experiencing homelessness in Greenville. I know that you all have been receiving phone calls, we certainly have as well, and many others in the community. And what we've discovered in this is that there are a lot of good nonprofits who are doing work in our community. That being said, there's an opportunity for us to do much deeper collaboration as a community to really meet the need of people experiencing homelessness right now in our community. One of the areas that we're focusing on in the work that we're doing that I'll outline for you this morning is really creating this comprehensive plan for our community. And I want to emphasize the word action in this plan to prevent homelessness. And if it can't be prevented, we're really looking at ways that we as a community can ensure that it is very rare, brief and a non-occur, reoccurring experience for people who are experiencing this, experiencing this right now. So the way that we've addressed this, and we've really been working on this in earnest since May of this year. And I want to say a special thank you to you, Shannon, Mayor White, too, as well. Chief Thompson, thank you for your support and leadership as well. Really working together to figure out a way that we can create a plan that benefits all Greenvilleians. And we partnered with a premier national expert, Barb Poppy. Barb has dedicated her career to this. She worked for the White House for eight years, focusing on this at a national level and has worked with communities all over the country and her colleague David Dirks to really help us figure out the best plan forward as Greenville is in this growth spurt that we're in. I also want to acknowledge Gage Weeks from Hollinsworth Funds, Brian Brown from the Greenville Housing Fund, Melissa Henry from United Way as well, for their partnership in this. Brian, you know Barb personally and really recommended that we take a good look at her work and she's been a real asset to our community as well. So Barb's work will really help us over the next several months come up with this plan that we can adopt. I'll walk us through some of the elements of that in just a moment, but I do want to point out that we have two incredible co-chairs of this work. One, I think everyone in this room knows Carl Sobazinski, who is the founder and owner of Table 301 from the business community, obviously has a vested interest in this as someone who has been downtown for a very long time. And then Pastor Sean Dogan, who is at Long Branch Baptist, but also at Bon Secours and their community outreach work as well. So both of these gentlemen will help us lead this initiative over the next few months. So a few different groups have been formed on this and I'm happy to share the broader list with you. One is that community task force. This is a group of cross-sector leaders who are coming together from business, from faith, from nonprofit, from civic as well, to help us create this plan. That's a group of about 30 people who are working on this task force. We also have a lived experience council. This is exactly what it sounds like, people who have experienced homelessness recently in Greenville or are currently experiencing homelessness, who will provide their insight as we build this plan. The leadership team, which is a small group of leaders, who are really tasked with making sure that this stays on track as we build it out. And then United Way is playing the administrative backbone for this. So making sure that we're keeping things moving and that we're helping Barb and her team as they're in our community, learning what they're learning about us. The timeline now through, through December. So when you look at this, it's a robust plan, no doubt about it. We are getting after it as quickly as possible so that we have something very comprehensive to share with the community. Barb and her team were here last week and hosted meetings. It was jam-packed of four days of meeting with people with lived experience, touring our, our current shelters. They did a ride-along with Chief Thompson, thank you for that. They met with other leaders in our community. They had time with you, Mayor White, I know they met with you as well, Shannon. So they've had a lot of deep conversations in our community to really understand what we're facing as it relates to people experiencing homelessness. So that is what you see in phase one on this timeline. That's the design process to understand how are we actually going to tackle this as a community. They will be back in October, which is where we will approve a one-year plan to address this. It's also framing out the three-year plan so that we can understand how we address this in the next several years. In November, we'll launch that plan and there will be key steps along the way to engage all of you and others in the community as to what that plan is. In December, we'll work towards adopting that three-year long-range plan. And then in January, we will officially launch that. Before I share with you sort of the framework of, of the areas of what we learned last week would be really important. One of the things that stood out to me last week, and as we've been talking about this, is that what I believe is happening in our community is that we don't have a homelessness issue. I believe that we have a coordination issue. If each of you were running a program related to homelessness and I asked you to write down on a piece of paper, how many people are experiencing homelessness right now in our community? Or if I asked you to write down, how many beds do we have in our community? What are the different options? Every single one of you would give us a different answer. And so our goal in this is to really understand how we create awareness and options for people who need services both tonight and then in the longer-term arena. So that's a really important aspect of what we're learning from the time that we spent together last week. So I think that's an important nuance as we move forward in this because that will certainly be something that we'll have to address and, and in some cases potentially disrupt. So six areas emerged to that point out of the conversations last week. Now, these are not written in stone. These are tentative. These are things that we're going to be exploring more as a community to really understand how we can address this. Number one is that we feel like we really need a joint command center. And what we mean by that is similar to emergency or disaster relief. This would be a one, one-stop shop where people could understand what beds are open tonight, what gaps exist in the community, what service gaps do we currently have? So that we understand how to best triage some of the emergencies that we see in our community. So someone who may be having a mental health crisis downtown Greenville or someone who may be sleeping on a park bench, we would be able to triage that with that command center of leaders in our community would be able to then, you know, make sure that people had a place to go and that resources were dispatched. The second thing that we're exploring is better permanent supportive housing funding and development. So right now, as we think about the needs that we have in our community, we do have a gap in permanent supportive housing. So truly an emphasis on supportive, those wraparound services that people need to be successful and stay in the long term. So we're looking at how we design that and establish a plan to finance and fund a pipeline for people who are experiencing homelessness. And then also a high-quality navigation center. This is different than the command center. This would be the boots-on-the-ground, our nonprofits who are in this space, our mental health service providers would have a real strong sense of navigation of if someone is experiencing homelessness, helping them get every single one of their needs met. Instead of saying, go call this nonprofit and they can help you with this. Or go down the street to this nonprofit and they can help you with this. It really puts it on the service providers to do first-call resolution, if you will, with someone who is in need so that they're not being bounced around to different places and then finding out, oh, we don't have a bed tonight, we're not able to help you, we can help you in a few weeks, et cetera. So that would be a key area that we would focus on as well. Public awareness and narrative change. This one is a big one because I think there are a lot of myths out there about what it means to be homeless and what people are experiencing or whether or not they want help. I know you all are getting a lot of phone calls about how people can be helped or their concerns about seeing people crop up. This would be a big one so that the general public knew exactly what we were doing to educate them around homelessness in our community and what resources are available. One of the things, Chief Thompson, that I appreciate about you is that you often say being homeless is not against the law. Having mental health issues is not against the law. That said, we need something outside of nine-to-five, Monday to Friday to really address the growing challenges that we're seeing in our community so that we can continue to have, as Beth was just saying, this really thriving community where people love to come visit and take part in all the things that we have to offer. Capacity building, that's really focused on how are we truly building the capacity of our nonprofit sector. Many of our shelters express the sentiment that they were there to provide shelter. They have found themselves in positions of having to provide way more support than they have capacity for or staffing for. So we'd work to build capacity with each of those providers. And we've identified a couple of ways where we can already do that. And then of course, most importantly, how do we know that any of this is working? Data collection, analysis and reporting, back to our providers, of course, but to the general public and population as well of, how are we doing? Are we meeting our metrics that we anticipated to based on this work? So those are the six areas that that task force will then break up into subcommittees to really work on and understand if that's where we need to be and can we get results in those areas as well. And then just of note, you know, one of the things that we've been running on the parallel track with this is working to identify federal funds that are available to support the work in our community. And there are three in front of you that you'll see. Two have been submitted and we're waiting for a word back on them. And then one is in process right now. This really shows the support that we're trying to provide to the applicants who can apply for them, additional funding. So one is through the Department of Justice. This has been submitted already, over half a million dollars to support mental health initiatives in partnership with the Greenville Police Department. We should find out anytime in the next week or so whether or not we receive that. Again, thank you, Chief Thompson, you were at the table for that as well. So the lead applicant would be, is the city of Greenville in that case. HUD has had some interesting opportunities crop up. We did submit a $1.3 million grant to support eviction prevention. The lead applicant on that is through the county, but it would benefit the city of Greenville. We cast a wide net on that, again, around eviction prevention. And then we are in the process right now on another HUD opportunity. This is new funding that's available for new affordable housing. Brian, you've been a great partner in that work as well through the housing fund. That's up to $7 million to support the development on this. I think most of you know that HUD applications are an absolute beast. So we're working through all the details on that right now with Shannon and her team. And again, that would be the lead applicant of the city of Greenville. So I wanted to share that as this broader scan of all of the supports, all the way from the unhoused to affordable housing in our community and ways that we're looking to support the city and others. And then finally, just the current funders of Barb Poppy's work and her, her deeper dive in some of the task force work that I mentioned. I thought it would be worth listing the partners at the table on this. We don't see this as a city issue to solve. We don't see this as a United Way issue to solve. We see this as a community issue where we all need to come together and get really creative and innovative on how we solve this. So these are the folks that have initially invested in just bringing Barb here to do her good work over the next several months. So I wanted to list them out and of course, thank everyone on this list for their, for their support of the work as well.
Who is the Hathaway Foundation?
Hathaway Foundation.
Hathaway.
Gage, who would you, how would you describe the Hathaway Foundation?
It's a new kind of foundation.
At Greenville, I mean, is Greenville, basically.
Relatively new, but they're, they've got pretty good resources, to say the least.
Yes.
I appreciate Sylvester and I play.
I think she's making us about a couple more slides.
Oh, okay, more slides.
I just, I just have one more slide, one more slide, just to outline a little bit of the next steps. So Barb will be conducting additional meetings with leaders in the community. I know some of you haven't had the opportunity to chat with her. She will be available to do that. We have established those work groups that will go out later this week to really do a deep dive into those six areas that I mentioned. And then we are looking at a deeper communications and public relations aspect of this, including a website. We'll bring you all along on that, of course, through you, Shannon, thank you, and keep you up to speed on that. But it will be a place where people can then go to get more information and also a place for people to go if they need services or support as well. So those are some of the more immediate next steps.
Thank you, Megan.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
I, I like what your, your focus about looking at what existing entities, agencies are already trying to do, but making sure everything's coordinated and they have more resources, perhaps do what they do best. And making sure everyone knows what everyone else is doing and connecting all the dots on that. Instead of inventing something entirely new that doesn't exist already. But I think that makes a lot of sense. We've always had a lot of agencies and people involved in this work, but you do sometimes wonder if everyone really is focused on what they can do.
Yeah.
But, but thank you for stepping forward your leadership on this.
First thing.
Next, we'll have Mr. Brayton, followed by Mr. Dworkin, followed by Mr. Stahl.
Good, thank you. I'm going to state the obvious on half everybody in the room. This is really good and really important stuff. So thanks for providing the update to council. Thanks to everybody on the task force and the community for doing what you're doing in the weeks that preceded. And we'll follow this conversation. Just a couple of quick thoughts. I love in particular the way you framed up this effort. I'm going to loosely quote, well, I think I heard you say that, you know, we, we may have a coordination opportunity as much as anything else. I like how you also point out that this isn't any entity's particular mountain to climb, so to speak. It's all of ours, it's the community. So well said there. Two other just quick thoughts on the data part of the framework, number six, the bullet point. I mean, all these things are essential, but I think that's especially critical, right? Because it's the old adage, right? Like that which you, you know, how do you manage that which you're unable to or unwilling to measure? And I think that's been a lot of the issue is how do we know to what extent previous approaches have been impactful? If you can't, you know, track it over time and compare it to other things. So kudos there. Do you know does Barb have an almost one-size-fits-all set of data points or methodology that's proven successful in other communities?
You know, I think that's one of the, the best assets of Barb is that she doesn't believe in one-size-fits-all. That's, she comes in and she does the landscape analysis with all of us and then really digs in on setting up data so that we can track what makes sense for our community and what's most important. One of the things that she pointed out was, based on pre-conversation, she expected to get here and see a huge issue around homelessness. And she pointed out, we're in the sweet spot of really being able to get our arms around the current issue before it gets bigger. So she's going to help us craft the right data points to track that and really understand it. Right now, our community does a point-in-time count, which I think most of you are familiar with, in January of every year. That gives us the essence of, of what we know from that moment. One of her recommendations is to consider doing that more often.
Hundred percent.
So that we have a better, better sense of that.
Hundred percent. Just one final thought I shared with a task force member who's in the room with us today. But going back to your coordination thing, I mean, I mean, the thing, of the many things that'll come out of this work, and you've already alluded to, you know, I've just pictured, call them flow charts, call them situational mapping, where the numerous predictable scenarios where we must come together as a community to lend assistance or to coordinate, and maybe some unpredictable. You know, I feel like the way I know I've struggled with it, we've struggled is to say, okay, this is happening. Now, who gets involved in what order and when? And is that exactly by design? Is that just kind of root Goldberg because it's, you know, this day or this weekend? But to be able to map that out and just, you know, let that be the playbook, so to speak, I think would be most advantageous for us. And I sense stuff like that is in development.
That's right.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I like what a couple of comments were made. I, I think the coordination is, is essential and I really appreciate you being here and presenting that. I think that, that the, I think you're spot on with that. I, I have a sensitivity to this issue. I think some people know this, in this room, I come from a, a family, a father who was, had nothing and was homeless for two years. So I grew up under the roof of a father who experienced homelessness at, at a time where there weren't a lot of social nets other than the church. where there weren't a lot of social nets other than the church. And I know that, so echo all the good stuff. I, I do want to point out, I know that we get phone calls about, and you get phone calls about seeing people experiencing homelessness, you know, and, and where they are and how can we help? I do want to make part of your narrative, or at least, at least, so you're aware. The, the other phone calls that I'm getting, and I represent North Maine, and so we, we border Rutherford Road, right? So I'm getting phone calls from James Street, which actually, but getting phone calls from James Street and Earl Street and Buse and, and Ashley of broken bottles and backyards, of syringes, of people not knowing what to do with syringes. So I have an urgency, number one, as we all do, of trying to, try to handle a very tough situation in, in the right way. So kudos to you. But I'm also urgent because I'm hearing it from my neighbors. Please help. So thank you for helping.
Yeah. Our pleasure. And it raises a good point. We're hearing that from other neighborhoods as well in terms of really caring deeply for our neighbors and then also wanting to make sure that we are.
Right.
Waking up to. Yeah.
Yeah. But you don't wanna, you don't wanna approach it like in an inhumane way, right? You wanna approach it very humanely and, and the right way. And I think we're doing that with this. And it's not a but. It's an also, oh my gosh, like we've, we've got urgency. So thank you for that.
Yeah, fair. And that's come up before. So that's being taken into consideration in this urgent sort of rollout in the next, in the next month or two.
Councilmember Stahl?
I'm good.
You're good. Okay. Great. Councilmember Dow?
I, I thought I had a pause while y'all were.
Councilmember Gibson.
Thank you, Megan. When you talk about additional PSH housing, I think at, at that point, you're talking about more land and the county has to be at the table. So I'm curious to ask, are they at the table in this endeavor? Yes or no?
Not yet. Right. So they've been at the table around the eviction prevention, but that's a huge opportunity that we're talking about as a leadership team because we absolutely have to bring them along in this and get them on board with some of the, the opportunities.
I mean, I can't emphasize that enough. I, I don't know how we, how we really realistically look at where we are without them at the table in terms of, you know, it's, it's not just in the city of Greenville. And when we look at locations for PSH, that land is not gonna come in the city readily. The county, I mean, neither entity right now is in the city. So they have to be there at the table. I also wonder, are our major hospitals at the table, i.e. Prisma, Bon Secours? Because, I, I mean, I can tell you our ERs are rough right now.
Yes.
Rough. And until we get this problem addressed or make improvement on it, we are losing our capacity to have quality ER at this point. So are those entities?
Yes.
Okay, good. The last, the last thing I was, I mean, I mean, I don't mean Sean Dogan. I love Sean Dogan. But I mean, the people of Prisma and Bon Secours, like the leaders.
They're not part of the, they're not part of the task force, but as we think about the broader, they're aware of the work that's happening. They're supportive of the work that's happening.
I mean, if we can make strides, this will help them.
Agreed.
So therefore, they have a vested interest in the success of it. They've got to have be at the table.
Absolutely.
Um, the last thing I would say, just as a plug, when you started talking about having that one stop, those wraparound services, because it's such a challenge when you have someone who's ready to accept help and you take them here and then you say, okay, next day, tomorrow, I'll meet you and we'll take you there. You're describing the exact problem that was being addressed by the Rupert Hughes Veterans Center, where it was the one-stop shop because they were losing veterans in between those, okay, come back next week and we'll go on our next outing. So anything we can learn from them in terms of their endeavor and how they set up and what they address, you know, I'm, you have great conversations with them. But that, that is the problem they were addressing with that facility. I think it's, it's a great model.
And Charlie is at the table. Charlie Hall's at the table for that as well as a member of the task force. He's been terrific. Great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah, just real quick. Thank you guys for, for taking us on. It is certainly something that needs one agency to look at all of it and try to figure out how everything goes together. As far as, my, my only real question was this, what has been the response from the agencies? Are they buying into this and are they buying into, to, to an extent where, where to the extent that they may be overlapped between services that they've experienced or exhibited some willingness to sort of tweak their mission in order to deal with that?
Here's what I will say. Everyone showed up to the meeting, so that's good. And it was a pretty in-depth meeting over four days and we're very sort of open and candid with Barb and her team. I think there's some skepticism, like anytime we start a new task force about insert any issue in our community, of, okay, what's really going to stick this time? And I would say, you know, the stakes are high on this one in terms of we're at this make-it-or-break-it moment as a community where we have an opportunity to make the right choice around what we do together. And we have the opportunity to make a choice of not working together. So I think there's a dose of skepticism. I would be surprised if there wasn't a dose of skepticism, but everyone has showed up to the table, which gives me, gives me hope and optimism that we'll make some headway. And listen, we've been very focused on the urgency of this, you know, of, of really tackling it in a smart way, in a, in a timely manner to help the people that are on, on the streets.
Good.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you, Megan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the items for our regular work session agenda. We are ready to move into executive session.
I'm gonna motion first. So move.
So move.
Mr. Mayor, council, you have several items to discuss. They all fall under the 8478, 1, 2, and 5. Discussion of intent to propose the extension of an agreement. Contract-related matter of property on South Main Street. And your concession of contract-related matters for a sewer expansion on Humble Street. Matters covered by a transplant privilege on the status of litigation. Claiming zoning issues. Questions in the agreement. Extension of services on the day and personnel.
All in favor of saying aye?
Can we have one hour?